... charities since I was nineteen. Every week, I get paid. There's a lot of places, there's churches, there's other organizations within our city that will help someone if they come and ask. So it's, I'm just torn because I don't want to cost the city more in billing, I don't want to cost the city more in setting up a charitable fund when what I think we should do is save it first. How quickly will that come in? We have no idea how quickly the community will respond. But we're hearing testimonies that if people knew of the need, I believe that they would step up. So I'm in favor of not seeding this, but letting our community know of the need, that it's immediately available, because we're going to take some action to make that account available and encourage people to save their money or come in. We've said before, already in meetings, "Come in monthly. You get your check monthly. Make a down payment towards the every other month bill." So that's what I'm in favor of.
Dave?
Oh, I was curious, Paul, why do you want to feed the fund?
Because, I didn't say "feed it," I said "seed it."
Seed it, okay.
Without money in it, it's not real, it's not a program. Nobody can apply until there's money in it. And I just think that the practicalities are that you need to set up the fund and put some money into it, just like you wouldn't open a bank account with a zero balance, they wouldn't let you.
And what I'm missing here is why you think that it should be the city's job to do this?
Well, understand how the... Number one, it's entirely up to council what the program actually looks like. If we don't actually set up a program through a series of ordinances, there's no way to spend that ninety-five thousand dollars. It sits there until we take it out whenever we do. So it's entirely up to council what this actually means. What, the easiest way for us to approach this is to piggyback on Clark Public Utilities because they have, they are members of a federal program which is quite narrow, actually, in what it covers and who it will fund and so forth. They, my understanding is that Clark PUD, at this point, is actually trying to figure out what to do because they have more money coming in in donations than they're spending. And because they're not spending much, it's not they're getting huge amounts of donations, it's just that the program is so restrictive. I mean, one time in twenty-four months, and only for a delinquent bill, and only to prevent a shut-off. And you still have to qualify with all of the other terms. That's pretty narrow. I can't imagine that we're going to spend ninety-five thousand dollars in the course of a year on a program that narrow.
But I'm still missing philosophically, why do you support this program? Why do you think it's the city's mission to do this?
Something that might be helpful, and I don't know that it'll answer that question, councilmember, but this entire item and the funding for it came forward from the administration as options for council to consider in regard to, partially in regard to, the rate increases that we've got going in.
Excuse me, I think also there was a council member request for you to look at something like this, was there not?
I think it would be an accurate statement to say that we have had, we, David, myself, have had conversations and sometimes numerous conversations with most of the council, and while this particular program doesn't come out of that, what comes out of those conversations is, what can we, as a city, do to assist these folks? Can we bring the rates down? And we're trying to do some very strategic, very large things in our capital program so that in years four and five, we do make those reductions. But part of this and the funding for it, and call it ninety-five thousand, call it zero, call it fifty thousand, it can be whatever you want for it, we literally put it in there just as a starting point for you all in your considerations. If that desire is still there to try and do something in the meantime before those reductions in the rate increases, how's that, actually come about and we're able to actually be able to bank on those and give them to you in full faith that we will still end up where we need to with the utility. There's still going to be increases, but not as drastic. This number and the seeding of the fund itself is literally just an option for you if we're still looking for those councilmembers who have asked, "What can we, as the city government, do to assist people who are having sincere problems in paying their utility bills?" So that's where it came from, from our standpoint, and the funding level as well. We just tried to pick something that we could look at and say, "Yeah, makes sense. Not only has somebody else already done it, we're using those funds from the late fees, everything else, to literally go back into assistance program."
I understand.
Fairly ironic that the same people are probably the folks that are going to need the assistance, but...
But I still haven't got an answer to my basic question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay.
Jennifer?
Okay. Interesting, interesting idea. Why can't we just reduce the late fees?
I don't think it's...
If this is not really being funded or meant to pay for someone's entire bill, this is just helping with the late fees, why can't we just...
No. This does not help them with the late fees.
No. So basically, we're going to be charging them the late fees and then paying their bill on the third time around or something?
No, I would assume that the policy would be set so that if they were utilizing these funds to pay the delinquent portion of their water sewer bill, that we would waive the late fees. We wouldn't be...
Well, this is the first I've heard of that. So we're going to be waiving the late fees for the people who are on the program?
It's all dependent upon the policy and the program that we put together, but it would be my assumption that we would follow the practice that we use for our payment arrangements. And if folks abide by the payment arrangements, we do waive the late fees and penalties. So I would assume that if we're providing assistance, the same rules would apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Joyce?
If I understand this correctly, depending on what program we come up with, we seed it with ninety-five thousand dollars, we will be paying ourselves back from that ninety-five thousand dollar pool when we're helping somebody.
Correct.
So we're just taking the money out of one place and putting it back in. That money is not disappearing, we will get it back.
Right.
If we don't spend it, we'll get it back, and if we spend it, we get it back.
Correct. But it is replacing, quote-unquote, "new revenue" from folks, from the citizens paying their bill.
But late fee revenue.
No, so if they owe a ten-dollar bill, we're paying ourselves back with our own ten dollars instead of getting a new ten dollars from the citizen. But it's not going to late fees, it's going to the actual utility bill.
But the ninety-five thousand dollars is from late fees that have been collected in the past.
Correct.
Reconnection.
Yes, I know.
Can I jump?
I know this is a hypothetical question, but how many of our citizens are going to qualify for this program?
No idea.
I mean...
Jennifer, when you came in as finance director, on average, how many shut-off notices do we send out on a monthly basis?
For actual shut-off, like the number that we actually shut off...
The start of the list, not...
The start of the list, oh, gosh. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I believe it starts at at least a hundred and twenty-five people. And then through calling and working with folks, we narrow it down to that number that actually gets shut off. And typically, we shut off around seventy.
Annually?
Monthly.
Monthly.
Because we do a different side of town each month.
Now, the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, we had, go ahead and tell them.
We can move on.
Go ahead.
We only had thirty-four. I found out there was additional payment that was made. Rachel and Lee spent the day prior to shut-offs calling all seventy-five or ninety-five people on the list that had good phone numbers to remind them, regardless of the fact that they'd already gotten several late bills, delinquent bills, saying, "You're going to be shut off, you're going to be shut off." We took the staff time to call and whittled that number down to the thirty-four.
You can just shut off the water, right? Sewer can't start it to shut off.
Correct.
Sewer kind of just flows. And that in itself, even though it was just before a holiday, isn't, that's not an odd example. Our staff does that every month. And for those folks that, and obviously you can see we're bringing in ninety-five thousand dollars still, after all those efforts are done by folks that are still late, by folks that disregard the payment programs they've been put onto or agreed to go onto, folks for the reconnection charges, all that type of stuff. I mean, we, quite frankly, it's embarrassing that we collect that amount of money. I have a hard time even understanding that in paying those late fees, that's how folks manage their money and they program that into there. But at the same time, our staff are still trying to reduce that number as small as it can be and not charge people for the late fees and/or have them go to the point where we're shutting them off and to get it turned back on, they've got to pay those reconnections. And even after going through all that on a monthly basis, you still have those balances.
We spend a huge amount on staff, just calling them.
It's part of what we program staff for. That's part of what we do as this community. It's not to say everybody does that, because I couldn't even tell you what our neighboring communities do. That's what this community does. And individuals respond to it very, very well. It gets extremely busy at that front desk.
Dave?
A point of clarification. I've got the impression from listening to the discussion that the ninety-five thousand dollars is not at risk of not being repaid. I don't think that's the case. If you suddenly go to zero, people suddenly figure out that if they pay their bill on time, they don't have to pay the late fee, your income from late fees is zero, and now you've got a deficit of ninety-five thousand dollars. Not that that's going to happen immediately, but it's a possibility.
Frankly, for me as an individual, I would just assume that we never collect a late fee.
And I understand that.
That people take care of their affairs and all that type of stuff. The reality is that that's not going to happen, but you're correct.
So my, and my whole point is that the ninety-five thousand is at risk. You can haggle about the quantification of the risk, the degree of risk, but it is at risk. And that's one of my objections to it.
Like I said earlier, it, literally, we're taking money out of one pocket, one city pocket, putting it into another city pocket, and that revenue coming in, the utility will have ninety-five thousand less to operate with than it had the year prior.
And that, again, is part of my problem, because we just raise the rates to get that night, to get money for the utilities.
Portion of it.
For capital improvements that are required by the federal and state regulators.
Yep. Well, and quite frankly, the enterprise funds, we're actually allowed to make a profit in, only because that profit is go towards not just the capital funds, but literally to build those reserves up for future needs.
Yes.
So that's one that we systematically are charged, if we're doing the right things right, we're charging too much for it for future needs. Those reserves are designed to grow, then get spent, then grow, then get spent.
And for this particular enterprise, I think that's a good philosophy.
It's the way it should be. Other questions from council? Okay, I've got a motion and a second on the floor to create the low-income assistance program and start it with a balance of ninety-five thousand dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Boger?
Aye.
Councilmember Punske?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenlee?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindsay?
Aye.
Councilmember McDaniel?
Aye.
Councilmember Shoemaker?
Nope.
Councilmember Freeman?
No.
Motion.
Can I just make a statement on why I voted?
Motion carries.
The way I see it is, you know, this, helping the poor and infirm has been in the state constitution, I think, since we became a state. And this is one exception. This is one program that we impose, where we have, where we are going to be actually imposing a lot of pain on our citizens. And anything we can do to mitigate that pain, particularly for the poor, I'm willing to support in this one unique circumstance.
Sure.
I'd like to say why I voted no, and it's funny how you can echo the same thing. I just would prefer to collect the fees differently, and that would be from the community in advance, which I believe can come in quickly if we were to ask. It's all a matter of philosophy.
And if I could also say, I think a program where we can, by the way, this, I think this and Clark PUD is the only paper bill I get. And I might be able to get Clark PUD to electronic, too. I haven't checked that. Does anybody know? But is there any way, you know, I think, we did talk about electronic billing. I mean, that just saves everybody time and effort.
Money.
We're working on it?
No, money.
Saves money.
So it's more, it's cheaper to pay the postage than to do electronic billing?
I don't know. That's what I'm saying, though. Going electronically, there's forty-five cents there just on the...
Right, that's what I mean.
Yeah, he said it would save money.
Yeah.
He was agreeing with you.
What do we pay per item on a deposit?
Are you still...
Deposit slip?
No, electronically, every check going in.
Oh, no. If we get a paper check and endorse it and put it into a deposit, a commercial account, don't they charge us twenty cents apiece?
Five cents.
For every item?
Yeah, it's not twenty cents, but there is a per item charge. But we get a, the way our account works is with the balance that we keep, it creates an amount that we can spend, so we watch that to make sure that we're not actually spending money, per se.
Hopefully, this twenty-one thousand dollar IT thing that we're going to do will help resolve some of that. We can visit that.
We would like to know about other options out there. Okay, so with those four votes, we are still on Agenda Bill 7812. The question before you now is the actual passage of the, oh, excuse me, before we get to that, David, you had, in your items, you had two other, three other items in here, I believe.
Yes, and I think, I don't think there's a lot of discussion on these two, and I think a straight-up-and-down vote can be had in about five minutes.
Okay.
Because we beat these issues up before. We're talking about the elimination of the seventy-five hundred dollar subsidies to social services?
The seventy-five hundred, the five thousand, then also you had a question at the top in regard, or some questions at the top regarding the twenty thousand for strategic plan implementation.
In view of the hour and the kindness that my colleagues have shown in listening to my complaints, how about we take the strategic plan off and vote on the other two and get on with the budget resolution?
Okay. So do you want to...
I would move to eliminate the seventy-five hundred dollar subsidy to social services.
And do you want to put that in the form of an emotion?
I just did.
Okay. I hear a motion.
I second it.
I've got a motion and a second to eliminate the seventy-five hundred dollar subsidy to the Social Services Center. Staff discussion.
Dave?
A couple of quick reasons. Social Services is a county mission as opposed to a city mission. Our budget just isn't designed to handle that kind of a load. We already subsidize social services here with building. We provide a building, we provide the maintenance of the building, I believe we provide the utilities, and do we not also provide the phone?
No, we haven't since 2010.
On the phone or the utilities, or both?
Both. All we have are the building and the maintenance of the building itself. And the building's already paid for.
Somehow I missed that. Thank you.
Building's paid for, there's no payment there, so maintenance only?
Correct.
O and M.
And that's my whole case, right there.
Okay. Any other discussion, council?
I, sorry.
Again, this is the 1889 exception, so it's a relatively small amount, and I think it's, I don't really want to use the word symbolic, but I think we need to show some commitment to less fortunate people in our community.
And I, I'm sorry.
Can I jump?
No, I was just going to agree that it's a county, county responsibility. I think it's important to be careful to define our job. If it's the county's job, let them do the job. If it's the state or the feds, but if it's the city, we'll step up. But I believe it's the county job.
Paul?
The county is one of the primary actual service providers over there. What the seventy-five hundred dollars helps pay for is for the Children's Home Society to man the desk and to supervise the building. For example, women, infants, and children nutrition program is served out of that building. And that's a program, obviously, for women with infants and children, many of whom frankly don't have access to an automobile. So think about taking a bus, a ninety-two bus from Addy Street down to Cascade Park and changing a bus and getting on and then changing again to get to the County Courthouse and then coming back the same way. That's not an errand, that's a career. And so it's just, for the little bit of money that we provide here, we get tremendous service to our local community. Because the, all that the seventy-five hundred dollars does is help the Children's Home Society defray the costs of manning the desk and having two people there all the time that it's open.
Dave?
In my case, on that one, it's simple. I understand the value for the money that we get. I just don't think that it's a city function to provide that. I think there are other sources that will step up and provide it, and the city shouldn't be in that business. The other thing is, I would respond to both of you who have just talked on this issue. You talked about the small amounts. A thousand here, a thousand there, pretty soon you're talking about real money. And it adds up in a budget like this. This is not a big budget. So when you're talking about thousands of dollars, you're actually talking about aggregating it into larger amounts, which then have an impact on things like hiring people. And this city runs awfully lean. Thanks very much.
Mr. Mayor, or Jennifer, would you happen to know how much of our city budget can be characterized as social services? I mean, I think the ninety-five thousand that we just appropriated, I would include that in this, and the seventy-five hundred. Is there anything else in there that...
We spent an additional five thousand to the Washugle Community Education Recreation Program.
That's next on the list here on the shopping block, so.
Those are, that's it.
That's it.
Okay. Any other council questions, Jennifer?
I definitely support, you know, this small subsidy, it is a very small amount to social services, the East County Family Resource Center. We definitely get a great amount for the very small portion of funds that we allocate for this. It's amazing what they've managed to do with that building. And, you know, overall, I think they're a very good tenant, and there are several offices located within that building, as Councilman Greenlee pointed out. A lot of the people who utilize the Washugle facility are local people here, living here in our community that are on programs already. And for them to be able to access a facility out here without having to, as Councilmember Greenlee mentioned, get on a bus and go clear across the county to take care of their business, it really does make a difference. And I think this amount has been reduced over the years. I don't know what it used to be, but I'm sure it's been reduced.
It's half what it was when it first came on council.
Yeah. So even at a, you know, fourteen thousand dollar amount, it wouldn't have been something that I would have voted against, so I'll be supporting it.
That's where our stuff, the bus food goes for distribution for, really, they say it helps most of the year. So they do a very valuable service in our community.
Any other council comments or questions?
It's difficult to think that you think I'm saying that it's not valuable, it's not that I'm saying it's not valuable. I'm saying, who should foot the bill? That's all I'm saying. I have a son that goes down to the county office every month, so I understand the trek across the county, and that's his obligation in order to get his funding. So I personally walk this every day.
Any other discussion? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to eliminate the seventy-five hundred dollar subsidy to the Social Services Center. All those in favor?
Aye.
To eliminate.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Say that again.
I retract my...
To eliminate.
I have a motion and a second to eliminate the seventy-five hundred dollars from the budget.
All those in favor?
All those in favor of eliminating the subsidy.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion does not carry. Motion fails.
Bah, humbug.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas to you, too.
And Councilman Shoemaker, did you want to make a motion on the five thousand for the school district?
Yes. I move to eliminate the five thousand dollar school district subsidy for community education services.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to eliminate the five thousand dollar contribution to the school district community ed services. Council discussion.
Joyce?
At a time when education is so important in every community, it seems like we should be supporting this small amount for the community service education program.
Jennifer?
Yep. Yet another fund that has been reduced over the years. You know, we have seen a lot of reductions around here. I, of course, being, you know, involved in the school district the way I am, I would support keeping this five thousand dollars in the budget. They do quite a bit with this money, and I think more so, it just sends a message to, you know, the school district that we value what they do, and, you know, they are struggling with their own budget issues. I know this because I sit in school board meetings every other week and listen to their problems. And, you know, you think we have budget problems. I won't expound on this, but I just wanted to rise in support of including the five thousand dollars expense in the budget.
Education is a primary public purpose in the state constitution. In some states, the cities actually run the schools. And so, and I think this, as Councilmember McDaniel said, this sends a message that we're supportive of what they're doing. It gives us, it's like, they're going to talk to us about what they're doing, and, you know, I want to know what they're doing. So, again, it's a pretty small amount, and I know, you know, like Everett Dirksen said, a billion here and a billion there adds up to big money. Well, this is five thousand dollars. So I'm willing to go along with keeping that in the budget.
Can I jump?
I've been an educator since I was graduate, since I graduated in 1975, been a school teacher, school administrator. We certainly do send a message that we are supportive of them. We send our children to them. We do support them that way, don't we? And we spend our taxes on them. But again, this is the defining of who is responsible for specific tasks in the city. In some states, I appreciate the way you worded that, in some states, they, the city pays for it, but not in Washington. So I just reiterate that the city's responsibility is not to fund education, that's the school's, the school district's responsibility. Thank you.
Dave?
I'd like to clarify what community education services is and provides. It's not your basic education, K through twelve. It's additional classes put on in the community for a variety of things, dance...
Children do use it, though, of course.
Say again?
Children do use it.
Yes. Yes, absolutely, they do. And my problem is not the fact that it exists. I used to teach in community education. I too have been an educational administrator and a teacher and all of that. But I think this is a school district mission. I know that for a fact. For the city, it's nice, but not essential. And I go back to the fact that our budget doesn't provide funding beyond essentials without tapping reserves. And reserves should be maintained for emergencies rather than being regarded as a special project piggyback. And that's a harsh statement, but I'm willing to stand behind it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Jennifer?
I plan to support this as somebody who pays a lot of money to community education services in Waschugle and in Camas, more so in Camas. So, I am always pleased when they have programs that I can get my kids into and steer my money here to Waschugle. So, I agree that it's just, you know, just a nice thing that we can do for our school systems to support them. So, that's where I stand.
Jennifer?
Just to reiterate what I was saying a few minutes ago. It is not, you know, part of your standard public education. It's not sure. Anything offered in the classrooms, you know, and that, of course, is a different budget. But I think the key word here is "community education services", and the fact that it serves both children and adults. There are also classes, you know, for any ages. And there are sports and that sort of thing, you know, for adults as well. And, you know, I just think that it shows that we're a community partner with the school district for this type of thing. This is, you know, something that's over and above and beyond, you know, your basic education. And, you know, there may come a day when the school district won't be able to fund this anymore. I would, that would be a sad day for me, because I too, as Councilmember Polinsky mentioned, you know, enjoy the benefits of having those extra classes offered for both children and adults, and have taken advantage of that over the years. But for now, if $5,000 helps in some way, I most definitely do support this on behalf of our community members, not just the children.
Any other council comments, questions?
Just a reminder, from an administrative standpoint, and I know, Dave, you've got it listed as community education services. We actually, I believe our check goes to the Waschugle Community Education and Recreation Program. And frankly, that's where we've tapped it off of, is the fact that while we have a lot of parks, we don't, as a city, we don't run a recreation program like a lot of other cities do. So, we've always taken the light that this $5,000 is a very inexpensive recreation program for us to be able to buy into and have at least a tiny bit of skin in the game, so.
Without any other council comments or questions? Okay, I've got a motion and a second on the floor to eliminate the $5,000 subsidy for community education and recreation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Nay.
Motion fails. With that, I believe we've gotten through the questions in regards to the items within the budget that were under consideration. At this point, I would entertain motions to read the budget ordinance by title only and to pass, post, and publish the ordinance.
I ask unanimous consent that we read the budget ordinance by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
An ordinance adopting the annual budget for the city of Waschugle, Washington, for the 2013 fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, post, and publish the budget ordinance.
I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance. And just for clarification, I believe, Jennifer, we're operating off of, at this point, the one that you handed out, that supplements, that shows a proposed budget for the city of Waschugle for 2013 of $36,396,211.
That was my understanding.
The only change would be changing the Fund 354, the title, which I can make that change. But other than that, yes, the one that I handed out.
And a whole bunch of expression of intent what that title change means.
Yes. Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion?
Discussion?
Is there a public comment? Or are we done with that?
I'm sorry. Council discussion. I thought you discussed it.
Dan?
Go ahead. Connie Joe?
Oh, Connie Joe.
That was fun to watch. I just noticed that you gave us the supplement, and when I did the math, it didn't show, I mean, it was much higher than the $295,000.
$5,600,000.
Like, $4,820,493.
Are you talking between projected revenue and proposed budget?
No, dude, there's two proposed budgets. When you do the math, $36 million, take away $31 million and change. It's a $4 million difference. And I thought you were only adding $300,000.
Recap sheet that has not been updated in a while? If you, okay, this is page seven of 89 in my binder.
Yeah, that's what I'm comparing it to.
And that was my question as well.
Just a $4 million, $4 million, $4 million, $820,000.
Which document are you looking at?
We're looking at page seven of 89, that original budget that was in the book.
Right.
Compared to the one that you brought us.
So, the one in my book says $36,101,211.
Correct.
That's the one you gave us tonight?
No. The one I gave tonight was $36,396,211.
The one you gave to council, $31,575,718.
Okay, wait.
Is that the revised?
The revised is $36,396,211.
Oh, that's the one from tonight.
We revised the budget on November 13th.
So, the ones that are in our book are outdated.
Let me look, just a second.
Yeah, there was...
What did we do?
I have a revision, a printed revision, since the first binder went out.
So, yes.
Took the old things out of the binder and threw them away and put the new one in.
So, yes, page seven has more. I didn't get that.
Where'd you find that, Paul?
Hmm?
That's my memory, but I, this is not something I would close track of.
So, what we did on the November 13th is we ended up budgeting the entire capital project fund for Fund 413. And that's all already in the reserve funds. It's, we already received the revenue, so that's the difference. We added $4 million worth of projects.
You just added bond funds to the budget?
Right. The spending of bond funds. So, there was a revised copy provided November 13th. And so, if you compare the November 13th to the one I handed out tonight, the difference is only this one. So, if you look at page...
I don't know what I did with that. I don't remember.
You guys get them paper and Dropbox both? I don't, and I have the right one.
You have the right one. What's in this little folder, in this little bag? Okay, thank you.
So, previous to this discussion this evening, your updated version should have read $36,101,211.
Correct.
And through the discussions this evening, that has increased with the repairs for the Sunset Ridge sinkhole problem that has inflated to $36,396,211.
I don't have it.
I don't have a printed copy, but I just went back and pulled up an electronic copy.
Okay.
So...
Thank you for that.
Just a matter of getting my budget.
Great.
Updated with the printed copy.
So, are we good to go on that one?
We're good. I'm good on that.
Okay, so I've got a motion and a second to pass, post, and publish the ordinance in the usual manner. And we are discussing an ordinance that will create a city budget in the amount of $36,396,211. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving to Agenda Bill 7912, adopting a resolution and authorization for the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement with the Calitz-Wakayakam County Council of Governments for medical insurance and rate stabilization pool.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So, as Mayor pointed out, the proposal here is to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Calitz-Wakayakam Council of Governments for medical rate stabilization pool for Kaiser Medical Insurance. So, the recommended actions are to read the resolution by title only, pass, and post the resolution in the usual manner, and then authorize the interlocal agreement with the...
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
A resolution authorizing the city of Waschugle to become an affiliate member in the Calitz-Wakayakam Council, County Council of Governments, and authorizing the city to enter into an interlocal agreement with the Calitz-Wakayakam Council of Governments, WC, CW, COG.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second.
I just have a question. It would seem to me that the resolution does authorize the mayor to sign, or do we need a separate resolution for that?
Mayor's saying, talking with the folks of the Cog, that we do need a separate resolution.
Thank you.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement with the CWCOG.
Second. I've got a motion and a second to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement with the CWCOG. Council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Takes us to Agenda Bill 80-12, a resolution to amend Exhibit A of Chapter 2.8 for department heads and other nonrepresented employees and Chapter 3.06 for compensatory time accrual.
Mr. Mayor, Council? So, this agenda bill has two items. The first being the 2013 budget. It does include a 1% salary schedule for the nonrepresented, as identified in Exhibit A in the packets, and included as part of 2A, our personnel policies. The second item is an amendment to Chapter 3.06 of our personnel policy that discusses comp time off. This policy has been amended to increase the cap from 40 to 60 hours in striking language, that the time off must be used within 12 months of the rule. The recommended action is to read the resolution by title only, have passed and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Mr. Mayor, I ask unanimous consent that we read the resolution by title only.
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
A resolution amending two sections of the city's personnel policy manual relative to the salary schedule for nonrepresented employees contained in Exhibit A of Chapter 2A by 1%, and also amending the Waschugle personnel policies with regard to compensation, time off for nonexempt, nonrepresented employees.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass and post the resolution in the usual manner.
Second. Got a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Council discussion. Dave?
Move to divide the question into separate questions of the salary schedule and the other amendments.
I've got a motion to divide the question, the two issues that are within Agenda Bill 8012. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second.
We can't have a discussion without a second, is that correct?
Okay, hearing no second, we are at the main motion, which is a motion and a second to pass and post the resolution in the usual manner. Council discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. And that takes us to the second point in the agenda for any members of the public that would like to address council. Leah, how are you?
I'm good.
Nice to see you.
My name's Leah Greenwood. I'm the executive director of Affordable Community Environments. For the record, my address is 2101 East 8th Street in Vancouver. I wanted to update you on two things that ACE is doing in Waschugle. The first is that we did just receive an award of $2 million that is one step in securing all the funding for us to acquire and renovate the Town Square Apartments. So, we had spoken to you about that project in May. And so, we've taken our next step. Our hope is that after the first of the year, we have a final...
Is that on H Street?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll have, after the first of the year, we'll apply for our final piece of funding from the state. And if we're awarded that, then we proceed, hopefully, in renovating the property in August. So, it's a slow process, but we're still moving forward. The second thing I wanted to update you on, and this really came out of the discussion we had in May. Today, we have submitted an application to Clark County to, for funding for a home repair program specifically in Waschugle. And this would be, this is a request to the Community Development Block Grant Program to fund a home repair program for low-income seniors and disabled homeowners. And a couple of things that we talked about in May was, one, the need to connect community resources to folks that had code violations, nuisance complaints, needed help upkeeping their home. And so, really, that's what this program is. It would be a volunteer-driven program where we would work with community members, secure volunteers, secure donations of materials and people's time, and help do small repairs, ranging anywhere from small electrical and plumbing, painting the exterior of a home, putting in accessibility features to allow someone to stay in their home. Our intention is to work with the code enforcement staff here at the city of Waschugle so that we're connecting the program we would offer with people that have had violations or nuisance complaints. And then, we would work with all the groups that were here in May in coordinating volunteers to get that work to occur. The other piece of the program, and it really relates to some of the conversation you were having today, is we would also look at increasing the efficiency of people's, well, electrical, but as well as plumbing in particular. And so, we actually, through our renovation of the Gateway Garden Apartments, saw 40 to 50% decrease in our water usage through updating fixtures. So, one of the things that we would do as part of this home repair program is also updating fixtures and trying to address that need that I know was talked about in May. Also, I heard the need here with the other program. So, kind of, the light bulb went off that probably one thing we'd want to do is coordinate with folks that are accessing, if you do develop a program, coordinating with folks that are accessing that program, and making sure we can make at least some small improvements so those bills are smaller for them. But really, just wanted to update you on the two different projects and programs we're wanting to do here in Waschugle. And thank you for the support that you've given us, too.
Awesome. You need to come through the door more often. Every time you do, you've got good news.
Well...
It's a wonderful thing.
Yeah. Well, the $2 million is great news. Hopefully, we'll get the funding from Clark County, kind of going with the county being a source of social services. But hopefully, we'll get that program and be able to bring it here to Waschugle.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Leah, thank you.
I'm Marilyn Tyrrell. I live at 950 G Street. I'm not on the city council, so I'm, but I'm throwing some ideas at you, please. Mr. Hickey talked earlier about quality of life issues that... Mr. Hickey talked earlier about quality of life issues that would bring jobs, businesses, and I have never seen a city advertise, "Come to Waschugle, we have great sewers." We are talking about quality of life, and don't forget that you have managed to do that, I mean, managed to overcome some of that. We're talking about parks and livability and so forth, and I was thinking here, Esther Short is a great success, but Esther Short has lots of trees, it has places to sit down, it has a plaza for people to gather, and it has lots of places to have coffee and food. Officers Row, which is quite as lovely, doesn't attract people because it doesn't have those things. Our square has pappas, but that's it. It has a large, open area which is frying in the summertime and totally unattractive to me. It would, I would like us to tear up the square and put grass in, but, you know, that's the way it is. Vancouver also is not split up the way we are with the highway going this way and then the rail line splitting it up, so that's, developing a large park is going to be a problem. When you're spending that money on acquisition, or a small portion of it on acquisition, there are some real dumps that I have complained about. The housing at the southwest corners, southeast corner of Fifteenth and B Street is really, really unattractive. There's a little park there, and then you come by, and there's this really dump. Okay, next thing. You were talking, Ms. McDaniel, about the staff required for this treatment for poor people. I get the PUD authorization down at Clark PUD, and there are a lot of papers required to justify your medical, your income, et cetera, et cetera. All that work will be done by the time it gets to the city, so that's not a concern. As far as the water bills go, I don't know why, or I'll throw in this idea anyway, a water, if you want to have a monthly water bill, which I think isn't a bad idea because I agree about the budgeting, why couldn't the alternate month be half of the bill from the previous month? Doesn't require a lot of math, and it will flex. So, there, there's my ideas for the time being. I did want to tell you that I had the sad job this morning of putting Teddy to sleep. He must have done something anyway. His, he didn't work from the waist down, so he, he's gone. I am glad that he lived long enough to bring to your attention a situation that needs fixing. You're not doing it just for me or for Teddy, but everybody who has an animal in there deserves a better treatment than we got, and thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. I'm sorry. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Before I start, I'd like to say that I really would congratulate you on the budget process. It reminded me of your discussions of, it could have been my grandpa, somebody said, "If you take care of the nickels and dimes, the dollars just tend to take care of themselves." And I know some of it seems like nickel and diming, but there's a lot of cities out there who are obviously going bankrupt, you know, and having a lot more difficult time. But anyhow, I just wanted to follow up. Last week, I mentioned that I traveled three thousand miles across the country in five states, and I never saw anything that even come close to where we are. Last week, I took a museum tour up in the Tacoma-Seattle area, so now I'm up to thirty-five-hundred miles, and I still haven't found anything that compares to what we've got right here. And that leads me into talking about the, you mentioned the budget. There wasn't much discussion about the fifty thousand dollars a year that you contribute to Qaida as well as Camus, and the port contributes one hundred thousand dollars. And I know in the last few weeks, you've had presentations from both Qaida and with Clemmy River Economic, and I know there's been some PowerPoints, and to me, it just looked very, very optimistic. Of the two other entities that are your partners, I hope Paul can help me on this because my memory is just not that good anymore, but the port just completed a six-point-five million, I believe it was, six-and-a-half million dollar acquisition of waterfront, of a portion of which was Hamilton lumber. A portion of that will be in, well, as projected, a beautiful greenway, walkway from the marina all the way up, and from what the projections are, that will be an incredible enhancement to our local community. City of Camus, I do attend those meetings when I can. They're building a beautiful community center out where the Moose Lodge used to be on Lackamas Lake. So, our other partners in the, in the community are doing these things, and this project that you talked about, a great link tonight about having a five-hundred-thousand-dollar reserve here for future enhancement, urban renewal, downtown redevelopment, whatever you want to call it, that all plays into what the other entities are doing to make the quality of life here, I mean, to me, as spectacular as it is. But we're talking about Steigerwald, the port is going full bore on Steigerwald, several hundred thousand spent, there'd be a lot more spent on that. Of course, I know you've heard Paul Dennis talk about quite a few businesses that are showing interest in our area. Fisher Investments, a good example. Mr. Hickey mentioned tonight that when you're going to develop something, the employees, if you want to attract the employees today, you want to attract them to a place that has a quality of life, you know? Some of them get weekends off, and they want to go hiking and bicycling across the river and everything. So, just in closing, I just want to say that the initiative to take five-hundred-thousand dollars, and of course, each part of that will have to be voted on you, but whatever you can do and whatever you are doing, I firmly believe you're moving very, very much in the right direction. You're, I think, working well with the partners with Qaida, and I, well, I look forward to being around long enough to see the, this all bear fruit and, and see how things go. So, I just want to, I guess, congratulate you on that budget. I have seen some government agencies see a short PowerPoint presentation and say, "All those in favor," and this was quite a bit, of course, different situation, but more power to you for watching, watching your budget and ending up in the black and running the city with the staff very well, so my congratulations to you.
Thank you, John. Yes, ma'am.
It's pretty scary, honey. Angard, four-eight-one-three K Street. I just wanted to ask you guys something. We, as a community, I live in the community, I play in the community, I eat in the community. Some of you may not live in the community. You sleep in the community, you don't have things in the community and be involved in the community. I think when you look at it from a standpoint of a city, it does have an obligation to be a part of their citizens. It does have an obligation to take care of those people who don't have the benefits we all do. The other thing is, is that when you fund something, if I come down and give the city a hundred-dollar donation to a water and electricity bill, how long are you going to sit on that money? For a year? I don't think I want my donation sitting in some city coffer waiting to get funded. I give you the money to give it to somebody else who has a need. There's a big difference there, and so, I just want you to do something. Drive down fourteen, come down, and look at your city from up above, Highway fourteen. It's gorgeous at night. Mr. Hickey, awesome building. We look like an incredible, beautiful place, but if you come down during the day and there's no restaurants, and there's no places to go and do things, or to sit in a park, read a book, or take a break from a job, all those qualities that we look for, I worked for US Bank for twenty-four years in downtown Vancouver, I didn't want to go out to a restaurant and eat, I brought my lunch, I took my little toys, and I went to the park on a sunny day. And those are the things that you're talking about offering new businesses, the people that exist here, and the people who lived here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public that would like to address counsel?
Okay, moving to Mayor's report, I've got just a couple of items for you. One is a reminder of the Christmas parade and tree lighting this Saturday evening, not Friday, but Saturday, parade starting at six PM from Twenty-first and Main, and then the tree lighting right after that in Reflection Plaza. I believe there are some council members that have some information and to have a, a council entry into the, into the parade itself, so certainly, hope we see many of you down there as well. My second item is for counsel, hopefully for this evening, to answer the question in regards to your members to sit on the Appointments Committee for two thousand and thirteen, which would meet in two thousand and twelve, in the month of December.
What's the jurisdiction of the Appointments Committee? Can they pick our appointments, too?
The, yeah, city code allows for and requires the council to appoint an Appointments, members to an Appointments Committee in December of each year, to meet during December and make recommendation to the full council in regards to committee assignments and pass the-
When I got appointed that night, we elected someone to the, first of the Appointments Committee, I remember, I think it was, was it you, Connie Joe, or?
I was already there.
Oh, I thought there was, I thought John Russell was on it, that's why they had to replace him. Okay.
It's changed over the years, but-
Does it, do members traditionally stay on for one term and then replace them?
Up to you as counsel. The committee itself is, the Appointments Committee itself is made up of Mayor and two of the, the current-serving council members, so.
It's a new enough thing that there really isn't a tradition.
But yes, it does make recommendation in regard to the various committees, the liaisons. There are some of the organizations we belong to that have their own rules on who, who makes those recommendations as well, but it's, it's a good-sized list.
I know I'm the junior person on that block here, but I wouldn't mind serving on it. I know that if this were the House of Representatives, I'd be on the House Barbershop Committee.
They still have one?
Probably.
I thought I heard a volunteer, so move.
Connie Joe?
We have no new elected council members, so would we necessarily change appointments? Or is it only based on if someone brought forward, I'd like to change?
Your, your code, I believe, just calls for the council to appoint two members each December to that committee.
Okay.
Paul?
I would also say I'm willing to serve.
Does that mean that those that are on it are, need to say so, that they'd like to serve in the future?
I, I think any of you can nominate anybody, any, each other, or anything else.
We're doing that tonight.
I'm just asking you to do it tonight. By, by code, it's established in December and meets during December, so.
Gotcha.
Do you need a formal nomination process?
However you would like to do it, I bet, even if it's informal, we'll get through it.
I nominate Councilmember Boger and Councilmember Greenly to the Appointments Committee.
Second. Connie Joe, did you have, did you want to add to that?
I'll, I nominate Connie Joe Freeman. It's okay. You can nominate yourself. I, I'm, I'm on it right now.
Any other nominations? Anybody else that wants to spend more time in another meeting, or two?
How often does it meet?
Sometimes it could only take one, sometimes it will meet throughout the year as well in case there are changes and things that need to be refilled. Generally, once.
A year?
Yeah. It's a tough one. Okay, I've got three different nominations. How would you like to go about this?
Slip of paper, write two names.
Can't do it secretly.
No, but, right, but-
How many are on the committee?
Two, two from council plus the-
Yep, two members. Suggestions? Done? Any suggestions?
I think it's not, they're writing it down on the paper inside so that we can tell who voted for it.
Okay.
Okay? If you've got scratch paper in front of you, I've got more if you don't. This is as down-to-earth as it gets. Jennifer, you want to step this direction? That's that clerk thing.
Be able to read your signature, please.
Oh, so, too late.
I signed this paper, it was too bad.
This is my signature.
Got it.
Councilmember Plinsky voted for Mr. Boger and Mr. Greenly. Councilmember Boger voted for Mr. Boger and Connie Joe Freeman. Councilmember Lindsay voted for Connie Joe and Paul Greenly. Go by default on that one. Councilmember McDaniel voted for Mr. Greenly and Mr. Boger. Councilmember Freeman voted for, Councilmember Freeman and Mr. Boger.
I feel like I'm in high school.
I believe this is, Councilmember Greenly voted for Mr. Boger and Mr. Greenly, and then Councilmember Shoemaker voted for Connie Joe Freeman and Mr. Boger.
Okay, if you would all grab a second, scrap of paper.
Oh, no.
Brent, you're in, but you still get a vote. Councilmembers Greenly and Connie Joe both have four votes. So, you're only, only voting at this point for Councilmember Greenly or Councilmember Freeman?
That's all right.
Four votes. This is one that, even if I had the ability, I'm not going to break the tie because this is a council, council decision on who you have on your committee.
Your discretion is the better part of valor, sir.
I'm staying out of this one.
That's my signature right there. It's different from the vote, you notice that?
And on this one, we vote for one.
Yep. So, there's only seven, so this one can't, can't end in a tie.
You need that one signed.
Easily. We have a little tote board or something, a little horse visitor.
At one point, you were all tied there.
Did you just call me a horse?
All right, so we're going to do this slightly different. Councilmembers Lindsay, Plinsky, McDaniel, and Greenly voted for, Councilmember Greenly, and Councilmember Boger, Freeman, and Shoemaker voted for Councilmember Freeman. So, Mr. Greenly received four votes.
So, you've got an Appointments Committee of Councilmembers Boger and Greenly and myself.
What tradition there is, is that any council member who is interested in a particular position, they should let the committee know, and-
I think we'll have, I was just going to ask if Rose would go ahead and get some information out to the three members to get a meeting- out to the three members to get a meeting set up and then let's have Rose go ahead and get that information out and kind of be the holder for those things coming back so we're not all looking different places. If that works for council. Okay, that's all the items I had. Councilmember comments? Brent?
I want to, I'm sorry that James Dunn left, but I, I was dreading my water bill this month because I had a, if you follow my Facebook page, some of you do, I had a huge leak and my bill is normally 174.50 a month and it came in at 179.86, so it was $5.36 for all that leaking. And I'm not going to make a claim, you know, the city, I guess, pays half of your leakage charges, I'm not going to bother to come in and ask for my $2.68, but this leads me to believe that since I probably used two or three times the amount of water I normally use because it was a pretty big leak, my bill might, might be too high. So I really would like a, the discussion of how we set rates and I know we have these tier, the tier levels and all that and it's kind of weird, I don't know why it would come out at $5.36 more, I thought it would be higher than that.
When, when was the leak?
It was in October. This is an October, November bill, right? So I'm hap, I'm not complaining.
Each, each additional unit of 100 cubic feet is $2.68.
So I did two units?
Right.
Okay.
You received 10 units for the base price.
Okay.
And you were doing a lot of traveling then and you weren't using water anywhere else and it was just going out there?
Shower at the gym and stuff like that.
See, see?
No, there's no gym in Washougal, I guess there is there, but they don't have showers there.
We have three.
Where Danny go?
Any, any other items from council choice?
Oh, last week I went to the Southwest Regional Academy Workshop put on the Washington State Board, State Public Works Board. And I attended one of the workshops which was led by Lloyd Halverson, who's the administrator of Camas. And he said something that I thought was very apropos to our comment, our conversation tonight. He said that a successful city has vision, leadership, teamwork and a steady council and mayor that share a vision with partnership with landowners and private businesses that share the vision and the reinvestment in older neighborhoods so those parts of the city are not left behind. And I thought that was very pertinent to Washougal and kind of a commentary on why Camas works. So, that's what I have to say.
Thank you. Connie Joe?
It was established tonight, but I appreciate the, the phrase, shared vision. Share the vision. Help me see the vision. Help me see the vision of the business investors and the community. We just, I love this open conversation that we've had these last two weeks. Invite me to your office or I'll just come knocking, either way. I need to know the vision loud and clear.
I think we can help with that. Go ahead. Paul?
I also went to the all-day Public Works Board training and several of our staff were there also. And so it was a good group, we had our own little Washougal table. The initial piece was basically a repeat of what I said last time about that there is no money for capital funding. But then it got a bit more interesting. The particular breakout group that I got into was on regulatory hurdles and what we might do to fix some of the regulatory problems. And interestingly enough, Rogers Weed, who's the Secretary of Commerce, came to the meeting and sat in on our breakout group and had, took a lot of notes and had a lot of interesting things to say. We can, part of the problem here is that we can turn around a building permit as long as it's not terribly complicated, it requires all kinds of engineering studies, we can turn it around in about 72 hours. It's going to take three months to even get ecology to look at it if ecology has to. And so with, what that means is that for a significant commercial development, you're looking at regulatory planning horizons that stretch out three years and more and that's just not acceptable. And the secretary said that he'd spent a lot of time talking both to the present governor but also the incoming governor about what can be done in the way of what technical term is called lean management to make the process more predictable, leaner, quicker and, and just more, less in the way. Make it easier for things to happen that, you know, they're pretty straightforward, it shouldn't be that difficult. So there was, that was a great discussion, I'm very encouraged by, by the secretary's comments. The other thing was a great piece of news, the Port of Camas-Washougal was designated the Port of the Year by the Washington State Public Ports Association. That's a big deal. And so my personal congratulations to Commissioner Lampton, Commissioner McCray Smith, Bill Ward, Dave Rip, Kim and all of the rest of the staff over there, they have done an amazing job. If you think about the transformation from what that port was and its relationship to the community, what, just four years ago, just four years ago, there were people ready to burn down the building. It's, it's, it's incredible what, what they've done over there. So my personal heartfelt congratulations to the port and all of their staff.
Thank you. Other items, Jennifer?
Just wanted to bring forth a couple things from the last school board meeting that I attended. The turf project that's going on, replacement of the turf, they're selling bricks for that and that's a fundraiser for them and there is a due date on that, the 14th of December if you want to purchase a brick and have it engraved with your family name or whatever it is that you want to do for the, the brick project. And as far as the construction, they have that on the schedule for next summer, so they're hoping to be able to start bidding that project in the spring and start construction in July. Another pretty big construction project that they're going to be doing next summer is the gym floor in the high school and I, evidently that's been in terrible need for a good many years. I did not attend Washougal High School, so I'm not really sure, you know, what the history is on that, but evidently that, that's a huge problem, so they're going to take care of that next summer also. Another thing I wanted to bring forth is there's an ongoing discussion between their facility, their new facilities manager and the board with going to a small works roster, which I understand that for facilities and, and projects and small projects and things. And the board had a lot of questions about that because I guess not many school districts do things like that like cities do, you know? I, I'm assuming that that was something that, that maybe came forth between the talks, between our public works director and their facilities manager. So I thought that was interesting, not saying it's a, a good thing or a bad thing, I just, it was just something new that they're considering and I have to assume it's because of the ongoing communications that we have between the city and the school district. So that's really all I have.
On the back of my list of budget questions and proposed amendments tonight are four suggestions. One of them I've already covered, two of them I won't cover because of the lateness of the hour, but the other one, I'd like to get a commitment on a workshop. And that is review not later than the first of March next year, the Sowita Agreement performance based on two things. One is the deliverables that are required by the agreement's scope of work and the, the other is the performance data required by attachment aid to the agreement. Those are the state required economic development guy, or mileposts, measurements. I think we got ahead of ourselves when we approved an extension of the agreement without evaluating the performance first. I think that first you evaluate performance, then you renew the agreement. I understand we got ourselves into a bind in terms of time, I'd like not to do that again. So I'm proposing to have this on a, on a, a workshop not later than the first of March if you can fit it into the schedule.
I believe we've got it scheduled for the second workshop in January.
I couldn't ask for any more. Does that, does that give Paul a chance to collect all that? Okay, because that's a, a major undertaking.
Yeah, he's been doing it. All he was trying to do was make sure that he captured all of 2012 to have an entire year's data in order to give it to you so that those benchmarks are set for a full year.
I'm anxious to see it. Thank you.
Any other items from council?
I just have a comment here. I thought scheduling a workshop on emergencies that Councilmember Shoemaker had was a worthwhile idea.
Yeah, I think that's part of what we'll take up under the discussion of reserves and all of that, everything that works into this, Paul?
Just one quick note, the Wellness Committee of the city, periodically we have luncheon learns and the Thursday, December 13th, one of our, if you're a fisherman, more famous local guides, Eric Lindy, will be giving a luncheon learn on fishing opportunities here in the immediate Washougal area, which would be the Washougal River and the Columbia. Although I'm sure if there were questions from the audience, he could reach out to the Lewis system also.
Thank you. Any other items from council? Okay, two other quick, really quick items from me before we break for executive session. I think it's going to last very, very short period of time. One, my thanks in regards to your work on the budget this evening. There's a lot of different discussions that can happen. In the end though, you approved a $36 million budget and the toughest questions that we had were how to utilize some monies that we've got in savings. That is not a position that a lot of your fellow council members throughout the state, particularly in this state, are, are enjoying at this point of the season. So if, if I went through my list of things that I'm grateful for, I'm grateful for a community where we have those kind of discussions and not discussions of how we're going to cut things left and right. So thank you again for your work on that. The other one is in regard to meetings left for December. I believe from what I've seen from senior staff in wrapping up the budget, we have pretty much taken care of everything that really is pressing or is set to come before us for the rest of the year. So unless there's an objection from council, I will at this point cancel, cancel the meeting for December 10th, the meeting for December 17th and the meeting on December 24th on Christmas Eve. You want to do that?
I'll do Christmas Eve.
Excellent. I won't be here, your mayor pro tem, I'm not sure if she'll be here to-
She won't be here either.
I'll be out of town too.
Because of the Director of the Public Safety Committee.
If, if we do have anything that comes up that needs to be brought in, you'll be certainly notified and we'll put it in as a special meeting, but at this point, all meetings for the rest of the year are canceled. With that, I apologize to the, to the audience, we're going to break for what will hopefully be a very quick executive session regarding labor negotiations and labor issues. I would say that it's going to last less than 15 minutes, if that long, and I do anticipate action to follow. Mr. English, if you could stay with us? Rose, if you could turn off all the power buttons.